I'd like to bring the Concord, Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please know we're being recorded and we're on Zoom.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order under the same parameters. And we have, what's? Get my agenda.
So why don't we start with if there's any public comment?
You take a roll.
Pardon me?
That's right. Roll attendance.
Okay.
Getting that.
Lost that. So Rainey?
Here?
Here.
Booth?
Here.
Stuffy?
Here.
Miguel? He's here. Dogs are working. John's tonight, or Johnston here.
Miguel here.
There we go. So trying to get back into habit of public comment, which we typically do at the beginning of the meeting. If you want to make a comment, could you raise your hand and the administrator will probably put you on video? I don't see any hands raised. Maybe we'll try again at the end if there's more participants. The first thing we have is minutes from open session of a joint meeting on May 8th. Any comments on this?
As I recall, they looked good and thanks to Erin for faithfully recording all of these. So I'd move to accept for both committees.
Second? Is there a second?
Second for both?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Local call, all in favor? Rainey? You're on mute.
Sorry.
Heather?
Aye for both. And Cynthia to confirm, was yours for both committees?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Stuffy?
Mr. Stuffy for the region.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Miguel?
Aye for the region.
Johnston, aye for both. Correspondence, I don't know Heather, we've got a couple of things that came through. You want me to?
Yeah, go for it. There wasn't, I don't think there was anything that was CPS specific.
We had an email from someone in Chile who's moving to the region and wanted to have access to the district, which we sent over superintendent for response. We had a couple of emails thanking the CCHS team for the commencement run with blesses. It was a lot of fun. We had one across the street. Quite a show. We only expect from Brian and Mike.
Kate and Katie with their broken foot. So yeah.
Took one for the team there.
Yeah, they're very well received and I think they had more fun than the kids sometimes, so.
I think the kids were lamenting the fact they had to do it that way.
It was positive all the way. Absolutely, but.
And then we had one email, this might have come before, but I'm going to bring it up tomorrow, May 27th, three to four on Minuteman TV is the Legal Women Voters Select Board Candidate Forum. And I think it would be worthwhile to pay attention to that. Probably some differing views on schools and it would be important to understand prior to voting. So.
There's also school committee candidates.
Yeah, I don't have that, I should have that date. I don't have it.
Okay, hold on. I saw it in something. I'll update you.
Both forums are not going to be live. They'll be posted by the 30th.
Pardon again?
They're not live. So they'll be done by the Legal Women Voters and then they're going to be posted by the 30th.
So Cynthia?
Yep.
For the record, could you, because I know you know this, to whom do people send questions that the forum moderators could present to the candidates?
Sure. It's voterservice@lwvcc.org. If you go to the LWVCC webpage, you'll get more information right there.
So LWVCC?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I just looked it up. The school committee candidate one is being held Friday, the 29th from 1:00 to 2:00.
Right, but I don't think they're going to be live.
Okay, so.
I'm pretty sure they're not.
That's just one there. Okay. And it says?
We'll update the webpage, but.
And it said, sorry, did you give the email for questions?
Sure, go ahead and give it again.
It says, please send your questions for candidates to judyandSusan@voterservice@lwvcc.org.
Correct.
And while you're there, join the league.
Thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
So I think that was it. I didn't say anything else. Did you, Heather?
No, I think that was it.
Chairs and liaison reports. You have anything?
Yeah, any, I don't, I don't have anything major either. We're meeting so often. I don't have much new news to get. I just.
Did we have any?
Go ahead. Tonight, we're with the Carlisle Board of Selectmen to talk about the 112th proposal. And on Thursday, we're with the Concord Select Board. Tonight's at 7:00. We're on the agenda for 7:30 in Carlisle and the select board meeting is at 4 o'clock on Thursday.
Do you have a presentation or just a discussion?
They have Jared's memo outline 112th process, so we're going to speak to the memo.
The one we've seen already?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes.
The CCAC last June 3rd at 7:00 p.m., the CCAC will have the last board meeting. That's it.
CCAC.
Anybody else? Okay, so undo the reports, coronavirus impact updates.
Yeah, so I'm going to share my screen with you. This is a preview of tomorrow's task force meeting. I just sent it to the committee and Erin's working on posting it. So I'm not going to go through all of this in complete duplication of the meeting. Just now I got to get to the present button here. Zoom likes to take over, so you can't do what you want to do. So let me get back to the beginning. Tomorrow's meeting will be a group of about 35 stakeholders on all different perspectives at the table. Teachers from K-12, regular ed, special ed, parents, also the leadership and a number of other folks, including the Board of Health. So our goal tomorrow is to outline the process that we're going to use to just set the stage and make recommendations back to the school committee. Obviously, keeping in mind all of the guidance that we have from some of the outer level organizations. CDC has already released guidance, as have a number of other groups. The UN's got a guidance out. American Federation for Teachers has released a document. So I've been studying all of those and all of those informed what you're going to see here. Obviously, we will highly regard the governor's direction, which is due. It's due out for summer camps imminently, which I think will be highly, highly reflective of what we suspect the schools will be encountering from the Massachusetts set of regulations or guidance. And then Desi's working on a document too. So this is, this is knowing those pieces are going to happen while we're in process. So, and again, I don't want to go through all of this with you, so I'll just click through quickly as we make through. So I've outlined what we know, just so the whole committee gets on the same page. And you'll see the highlights here, talked a lot about, which is we know we're going to have an impacted school year to come, at least for a good percentage of the time. So, and that we need to work together in communication. What could happen? So these are the options we've been portraying all along and they're completely in sync with all of the other documents that I've studied in the other countries that are back and the other other discussions I'm having at the superintendency level. So we know remote learning is an option and possibly the potential initial option, depending on the sickness rates and directives. In-person learning is an option with safety practices in place. And that, that almost assumes all the kids are back. I'm framing it right from the beginning with the task force, that I don't expect that to be anything we are likely to see in at least the first half of the school year, if not longer. And blended learning, some of the kids are in school and some are not. And that can take a multitude of formats, as you'll see as we break this down. So how we're going to plan, I'm not going to go through all this, other than to say we're going to work together. We're working with other districts. We're studying the guidance. We're looking at the international scene, incorporating research on remote learning, having very open collective discussions. So there's a lot of feedback and back and forth and then communicating vertically and horizontally. So the charge of the task force, this was my own personal draft, so I'm open to feedback on this. An advisory committee to develop plans focused on public health, educational consistency and depth in the well-being of students during this international health crisis. And the membership, as I mentioned. And then what I want to start the meeting off with tomorrow is spending a little time in gathering input on what the vision is. And this will be an exercise we duplicate in multiple formats and in other committee work as well, as well as focus groups or forums that we run. I just think this is really important. Part of what we're doing for March till now has really been a common goal here of what we're aiming for. And I just think having this discussion, getting the feedback will help us to develop the vision and start to sync us up in a little more of a thoughtful, thorough way. So bear with my diagram here, but it was harder to come up with a way to explain. It would have been very wordy, so we went with the visual. So the task force is, you can see in the center. And then around this, we're creating working groups and building-based task force. And I'm going to define both of those in a minute in terms of what their work entails. The working groups will be representative of the task force on particular specs. And I'll show you what those are in a minute, as well as others who may volunteer to be part of that if we want to make sure the working group is of a significant size. And then building-based task force will be called together by the principals, who will hold site-based discussions. One of the main goals there was to be sure we had a means to differentiate between elementary, middle and secondary implementation of the recommendations we're going to be coming up with. It looks really different in each of those settings, so we wanted to be sure we had an option to create those at the building level. In addition, we're working on surveys with, surveys of parents, working with the CTA and CCTA for surveys of staff, working with the principals on surveys of those kids, forums, parent, staff, students. We're just going to keep offering multiple options and opportunities. I think I'm going to add focus groups to this, where there's a little smaller setting for those who might not have been able to engage in one of these other structured environments. And then the working groups that we're going to break into. So, and I'll show you the back and forth that we're planning here. So one feeds the other and then vice versa. The working groups are in these four categories, health and safety. And you'll see here, this is, this is the list of what this group will be talking about. And this would be the Board of Health, the lead nurses and others who want to participate in these kinds of discussions. And I think this is some of our hardest work, not that the other part isn't hard. This is the part that's the most novel for us. How do we create social distancing in schools? What are our hygiene routines? Are we wearing masks or not wearing masks? How do we handle illness? Whether that be student, staff and having a full protocol for how we manage that. Everything from isolation to, you know, 14-day quarantines. How do we manage with at-risk staff and students who maybe can't come to school? And how do we bend and flex with that? And that gets all the way into even personnel, personnel processes, in terms of substitute coverage and some of the other just basics of how we address and accommodate different needs that are going to come up. Safety and distancing, then, the cleanliness routines of hand washing and signage, the calendars and schedules. We've talked about that. Are they alternating? How do we handle high-volume settings? Where dismissal and arrival are part of the discussion, hallways and travel within the building, common spaces, which includes, you know, the list gets bigger and bigger the more you think about it. It's cafeteria, library, gymnasium, but I think it also goes into music spaces and some other large group areas that could have very dramatic impact on programs. How are we managing or are we allowing visitors out of school activities? What's our practice and protocol going to be on that? And then how do we handle other large group settings, which I expect would be some of the later discussions to have, because I think we're all pretty clear that right now, we're not going to have a concert for hundreds of people to fill an auditorium. I know this list will get bigger and probably morph, but that would be the set of topics there. Whole child support would really be looking at the social, emotional needs, mental health needs, family support. We want to still recognize that there are basic needs not easily met in families, given the fiscal impact of all of this. What do our programs look like? Assessment and screening are highly recommended. We thankfully have a tool already that we've used at middle and high school to screen for mental health and, and social, emotional needs. Continuing that focus on balance, connections, relationships, and making sure that's really high on our radar. And then blended innovative learning, curriculum, and these look, the list looks shorter, but it's really deep and expansive. Curriculum and all the curriculum adaptations we need to make, both based off of the closure this year and into the goals we set for next year, the combination and the fluidity that needs to happen with remote and in-person learning, the technology, the role technology has in that. Obviously, both infrastructure and devices, but also software and education purpose. And then professional development that needs to accompany that. And then operations, this is Jared's wheelhouse, food service, the impact on what we're preparing, how we're preparing, where are kids eating? Transportation, how are we managing to get kids to and from school in that very challenging, small bus environment? Facility and facility use, I really mean in multiple forms, both how are we using the schools and where and when, and how are we cleaning them? What's our process and protocols? But questions are also already of outside groups. Are the schools fairly isolated and that we don't allow use of outside groups during the pandemic, just to minimize exposure levels within the building? So there's a lot to this section as well that'll break out as we get deeper and start to break it apart. So then to complement that will be these building-based task forces, who will really do a lot of the same, replicate the discussions we have at the upper district level and the guidance we're getting out of the working groups, to then say, what does this look like at Concord Middle School? What does this look like at CCHS? Look like at the each elementary? Obviously, we'll be looking for some commonalities across the elementary schools. We've already realized some places, though, just because of how they or how they instruct where things may be different. So we're going to need to talk through all of those. And then the communication flow back and forth between the three groups that are all working. So the vision I have is that the working, the high-level district task force meets one week and the coming week after that, both the building-based group meets and the working group meets. And then they share out the alternate week, we get back together with the district-wide groups, so that there's this alternating structure that allows one, one hand to always know what the other hand is doing and inform and make recommendations. The goal really, the, this is, and I think this is an outside deadline. We met with a consultant last week, a few superintendents and I, who really thought July 15th, we needed to have the plan ready. I went with the 31st and built in two, two more weeks. That we would have an operational, educational, health-related set of resources and planning process fairly well complete, so that at least there were working documents to share and produce. Clearly, the school committee is going to hear all of this as it happens throughout the next two months. So I don't think, it wouldn't be like we're bringing you this final report in July. You'll know everything that's getting talked on all throughout the process. But really to have a deliverable that then becomes this community sharing out of, okay, we heard all the feedback. We've heard all the input. We've gathered people together and vetted all of these different options and come up with a best set of recommendations. I'm also hoping Desi and the governor produce guidance sometime during the month of June, so we'll have time to see how that complements and see where we need to tweak along the way. So this is that schedule of alternating meetings and the one thing, other things I'd point out to you, the week of June 8th, we'd also be looking to do forums. And I'm going to add focus groups to the parent, staff, student set there. So we have another vehicle for input. We're be wrapping up the survey time to provide data to us by the end of June. And then we can analyze all of those feedback centers and then work our way through the process towards recommendations at the end of July. Tomorrow, we're going to work on a SWOT analysis, just as a grounding activity. And then we'll be offering people the chance to sign up for working groups who are on the district task force. The building principals will be creating their local task forces over the next few days and into early next week. The great news is, when we put out the call for parents last week, we had a really astounding response. I think that's probably not a surprise. So we'll be working off that list of 110 people who are interested in participating. Those will be the first people we reach out to, to be part of these, these groups. And then we will be sure those people are part of focus groups and forums and all the other ways they can help. Because it's important to us that we, we are very inclusive and get a lot of input and feedback. So that's, that's where we're at. And I'm pretty excited to have something concrete to use as a bit of a roadmap, knowing we're going to modify and work our way through it. But it, it feels like we've got the, at least the draft plan to work off of with a lot of opportunities for engagement. Clearly, the teachers will be in, offered to sit on these task forces and the working groups. And the student voice is going to be really important to us as well. So I'm excited to get started. I think, I think some things will start. We're going to struggle with some things and some other things are going to start to come together. But that's the plan for tomorrow, so I wanted to give you a preview. And happy to hear any comments or questions, knowing that we haven't actually done this yet, so.
If nobody else is jumping in, I will just comment that I'm very impressed with the, both the depth and the breadth of everything that you've thought about and put together. To have that much of a plan to start with tomorrow, I think is very impressive. So thank you for doing all this and, and collecting kind of all of the that we all know are floating out there into an organized way to look at them, because that's not easy and very helpful.
Yeah, it turns out when you really start collecting the, the guidance and the examples from other countries and collaboration with other districts, you really start to see that there's a lot of patterns. And so taking the time to put all those to paper, I think, was really helpful, because it really becomes that checklist of what we need to think through.
That's great. I had one question also.
Sure.
The surveys, I think you said you're going to include students in surveys this time?
Yes.
Who's that going out to? What, what grade level?
Right now, the plans are for middle school and high school.
Right.
We haven't had a lot of time yet to talk on the elementaries, but we're working on one for the high school should be ready even by the end of the week. Mr. Cameron's taking on the middle school one.
That's great.
And obviously, a lot of the surveys are meant to get feedback from phases one through three to help inform us what was working there and what wasn't. And, and that'll be true of the parent survey, which Cora and I have been talking about. And then as well to have a vehicle to gather the hopes for phase four, which starting to me to equate to the whole 21, 2021 school year.
Right.
Yeah.
And will there be a, will a survey, whether it's the same one or a different one, I would assume different, but will a survey go to teachers also, or are you getting feedback via the union leadership?
Yeah, so the unions have been surveying, the CTA and CCTA have already done some surveying of them. And I've been able to work with them on what those results are. And it's absolutely informing all of this and just strengthening our collaboration.
Okay, good. That's great. Thanks.
So I'll pick up Heather on your reference to survey. And Lori and I have had brief opportunity to discuss it and we're going to do more of it. My, my thinking is to, that it will be best to pull together information for the school committee about the different efforts to survey and assess and collect data and then bring that to the school committee to then ask, is there information the school committee wants and needs that isn't somewhere in that survey landscape already? So I think we need to do that assessment first.
All right. You're saying show the survey to us before it goes out?
I'm saying with Lori, with the CTA and the CCTA doing surveys, what I want to do is, to use the grand term, a meta-analysis of what's going on already before the school committee weighs in on what it needs that isn't already coming to the fore with surveys already underway.
Right, got it. Okay.
And then just a couple of other notes. I don't think, Lori, that the July 31 report date would suggest a suspension of activities. This is such a moving challenge.
Correct.
So the, the group may take a different form, who knows? But the idea that the curtain will drop is probably quite unlikely.
I think very unlikely. My ex, my, my thinking was that right as we get to that end of July mark, right in that window, I, I hope, we're going to start to know what the likelihood of which options are going to play out for the late part of August. So I think that group will move its focus from planning to implementation. Likely all three sets of groups will.
You mentioned the patterns and I think all of us who are studying this have seen patterns, not only nationally, but internationally, that have some consistency to them. I'm still, however, looking for the outliers. Are there any radical, great ideas out there that we could bring, bring to Concord, Carlisle? And I don't know, but I want to be mindful of that. Even though the patterns are comforting, that we're on the right track, we'll still look to see what, what might be a very different level of best practice, some knows. Could it help us? We'll be attentive to that. And then finally, just a headline, I guess, for tomorrow. And that is that I expect I'll debate with our superintendent, educational consistency. Is that our word or educational quality? Because we, and I don't want to parse words too, too much. But I think when we say consistency, that doesn't mean quality gets a backseat at all. So I want, I want everybody to be clear that that's, that's not of lesser importance to the district or superintendent.
Yeah, sure. I'm open to wordsmiths, for sure.
So thank you, Lori, for putting this together and pulling the group together in very short order. You know, you've done all of this in one week's time. So, so thank you. And thanks to folks who have voted you on it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have some questions. One question is, is there going to be a central area, Google Doc area where all of the documents and?
Eva, I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Sure. Is the is there going to be a general area, Google Doc's area or a shareable area for all the documents and all of the regulations that are coming up from CCAC, from Desi, where everyone has access? And will the school committee also have access to that information while the task force, the task force is working? Number two question is, are you looking at what this private schools, private high schools? I'm more interested in the region, because I'm on the region. What the private high schools are planning for the fall? How they are looking at providing the best quality for their curriculum? Since we are not truly competing with public education, you know, in the mind of our families, we're competing with great private schools. public education, you know, in the mind of our families, we're competing with great private schools. So are we looking at what other, what the private sector is, private education is trying to do?
Yes. So the answer to both, I made a Google folder, yes, over the weekend, as I gathered all of this, which in it will be available. This, this is going to be a very open process. So people can see the resources that are being used and such. So within that, we have remote learning plans from other districts from phase three. We also have the learning plans from three out of the four private schools in Concord, because they were easily available. As well as any of the documents we generate, like tomorrow, the vision work and the SWOT analysis also be there. I also have a resource or reference in that is in a folder and can also be accessed with all of these outside institutional and organizational references that we've been using. So yes, every, I think everyone can have access to that. I can make it available to the public. There's no reason not to. And we will then create a live, live page off of the webpage where the task force work progresses and is shared continually.
Any other comments?
Sure. So to wondering, are you going to make an early task to try to, let me say, eliminate something that might not happen? And I'll just say normal, everybody in the school, same size classrooms, business as usual, just probably something that's not possible.
So here's my answer with a little asterisk next to it. I think we know how to do that for the most part. So I think, I think do that for the most part. And two, I think it's the least likely thing to happen.
Right. Let me just rephrase it. There are going to be, as you said in this thing, there are going to be students and staff who will probably not come into the building for many reasons.
Right.
So we would have to have an option for them. And that's going to be tricky.
Yes.
So that's more of your blended, I would say, because you're just going to have to have that.
Right. So I think that's why I keep saying, I don't see that really being the viable direction it goes, because even if we open in theory with everybody coming, not everybody's going to come. So that, that's a better way to say how I think we end up at a blended model. Most, most definitively, if for some, which isn't, you know, March, I felt like, oh, and if the virus clears up and then all these other things happen, now we all understand that's not how this works, right? There's going to need to be medical availability of vaccines and things like that, probably before we get to the point where we stop social distancing and, and some of that. So I, I think it is the blended model or the remote learning that we need to be spending the most time on.
Yep.
Whenever we get to the part where kids, most kids can come back, or even all kids can come back. I think then we're able to take pieces of the blended and still apply it where we need to. I, I think we're going to be fluid all, all or most of the year until some other option is available where people feel more comfortable, which I think could well be all year.
I mean, I'm just looking forward to the work. I think we just have to wait and get more information from, as you said, the end, the state and, you know, a big piece of this is, in my opinion, is testing.
Yeah.
You directly don't have a lot of control over. So, you know, and that sort of thing is, you know, the town of Concord, is it the, you know, it's the Middlesex County, is it just the state? You know, I, I'm not really sure. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So Lori, the I agree with you that the blended is really the most likely kind of outcome and at least over the, maybe not initially, but certainly over the course of the year. So one of the questions that's, I've been noodling around in my head is if blended means, if one aspect of blended means low density classrooms, which means that students effectively, teachers are effectively repeating the lesson twice, let's just say, for the same group, you know, for a subset of each group. So there's half the density at any given time, which means that at any given time, there's also 50% of the kids learning remotely during that same time. So the teachers are teaching the same, you know, six, seven hour day, say of in classroom, but they're not they're just not covering as much as one aspect. And two, they've got a whole nother group of kids who are, you know, in high school, maybe a little bit more self-sufficient in terms of online, but still need some Zoom time, other kinds of supports during that time. There's, there's a pedagogy impact and there's a staffing impact. What approach are you taking to that?
Well, and that's the work we're going to do. A couple of the things we're bouncing around, and this needs to be obviously part of a discussion with the community. What you described is what I'm hoping to avoid. I would love to see us really get creative with ways where the kids in front of us get the live instruction in person. But are there ways we can reach the kids who are working remotely with the similar content? For example, is that they're zoomed into the classroom and they're on the whiteboard projector? And yes, we need to probably work on whether adults need to be part of that zoomed environment, especially with the younger kids. Or can we do some flipped work where teachers, the direct instruction of the lesson is posted? So the kids at home are able to keep pace with the kids that are in school. So that's some of the work I want to spend time on. And Kristin obviously will be a huge, have a huge role in this and working with the, the teachers and looking at what our options are. But in my perfect world, David, we wouldn't be duplicating lessons. We might be coming up with alternate ways to reach all kids. But we'd be able to keep some more semblance of a pace than what we've been doing right now. So that's, that's a lot of things to figure out, but that's, that's the ambition.
Okay.
I wanted to say that higher education is right now trying those solutions and so they're teaching or they will be introducing that in a home, that will have students live in, that will have students at their homes and providing that sort of education. So they do have platform staffs and I'm afraid that they have to use them. I hope there is probably tapping through those resources.
Yes. And a lot of us have experience in some of these multiple blended platforms or even Todd in the higher ed environment online, which I know I've done and I was a student in that environment. Some of it translates, especially for the secondary kids. The, the challenge is the littlest ones, I think. And I'll qualify that. Secondary students who can really manage the executive functioning part of the independence. And I think we, the for public schools is certainly is reaching out and making sure we're supporting all kids and everything's you know, everything's accessible to those who need additional supports, whether it be special education or support with a 504 or English language learner, all those multiple things. We also need to be sure we're addressing. So staffing, David, I think I'll talk a little on that. That we have to talk more about because in that hybrid environment, you know, one minute Jared and I were like, oh, we'll need less staff. And then we thought about like, well, no one, no, maybe we need more. So that's the, that's the work of these committees is to vet what the best
Where I'm going with it is, I think your approach is very good. I, it's a school committee challenge that at least in Carlisle, I'm just starting to get my brain wrapped around. But as we're there's caution on the town side to keep as much dry powder as possible, not knowing from their side, you know, what life is going to look like. So there's a, there's a, there's an important political component to this that, you know, for the school committee's benefit, I'll just say that this is a mission the school committee needs to embrace full on on both towns, which is school may be more expensive. Period. You know, there's lots of reasons, there's more technology, there's more but you know, the first two, three months of this, where the schools, all the schools have done an admirable job and have saved money simply because there wasn't as much stuff. But school next year and the year after, well, let's talk about next year. I believe will be more expensive, not less.
So the, and this is
And understanding that, and how you play, you know, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. This is jumping to the budget agenda item, but Jared and I, we're going to update you tonight that we're going to go back and zero base everything again, because to back into it, it's just impossible because then we're going to have requests in there that either one aren't needed the same way, or certainly aren't a priority. So we're going to spend the next, I started to roll this out, the administrators today, we're going to spend the next two weeks having them dive into the budgets and rebuild what they submitted to us for the justification for every line item. Knowing all of what we just talked about is in play and trying to project forward what this blended remote learning really hires and what we can do without. And then we will spend the second part of June cleaning that up. And by the end of June, we're going to bring to you a zero based budget in both districts that we feel is our best idea of the first, given what we know through the month of June.
But my, I realize this is a lot more work, but since you're going through the zero base exercise, my suggestion is you build three scenarios. Three you have, you take the, you don't have to zero budget the, the current one that created FY21 in the normal environment was already zero based to start, right? And you built it up. So all you have to do on that one is say, what do I absolutely don't what furniture do I need to burn to keep the house warm? So strip out some of those things. That's your, the least likely scenario, but that at least is a relatively easy scenario to, you know, to model. And then you have your other two scenarios. You have your remote learning one. And yes, you have enough. You're beginning to get an idea of what that takes, done it for two months. So that, that is that scenario. And then the blended one is really the most important one in my mind. And I think it needs to be its own scenario. I, I don't think you should just handicap in June, what life's going to look like in November. You just don't know. So I personally think you gotta go, and maybe it takes another week or two. But I mean, there's not going to be a guideline. I believe that there will not be guideline discussions until probably August, maybe July, but probably August in run up to a town meeting in fall. So there'll be some time. It's a lot of work. But there is some time to do it. And I think, personally, I think we have to be prepared for each of those scenarios or something in between, but at least we have kind of a nuanced set of assumptions that will be more robust based on what happens. Cause if you pick one of those horses and it's not that horse, you just have to do it over again anyway.
Yeah, no, I, I think you make good sense. I was, yeah, I didn't think of how we could do it all within one, because you can't just pick one horse, obviously. But breaking it out really one scenario at a time makes good sense because
Well, you're going through the exercise.
Right.
And as I said, one scenario is, one scenario is subtractive, not additive. So maybe it's, it's not zero based budgeting. It's, you know, traditional budget, you know, delta budgeting, let's call it. And then the other two are buildups and you're building up the remote component anyway. It's just how much of it and then how do you merge it in? So anyway, that would be my, that's my advice.
No, thank you. That's helpful.
My only thought on that in terms of doing the two, I agree with you that the, the first one in terms of almost normal is somewhat, you know, aside being relatively quick, in terms of the other two, the remote, all remote versus blended. My only concern with saying, great, let's have two and one of them be blended is that even in a scenario of blended, let's say we start the fall blended, at a moment's notice, we, that might have to flip to remote. And so I think either of them has to have the propensity to flip to the other, which to me kind of makes them one in the same, because be a budget that supports either or both. Cause you, just because we started blended.
No, I agree with that. But if you, Heather, if you, if you under, if you, you know, everything about modeling is picking a scenario, making assumptions and sort of documenting the assumptions you make so that when you learn more about reality, you go back to the specific assumption and you adjust that piece of it, right? So I think if you know what full remote looks like and you know what a hybrid looks like, you have more robustness. Because for example, if blended, I'll just, you know, pick kind of in my head, if, if blended includes orchestra or band or something where, you know, it's just a bigger room and there's the people spread out, but suddenly if it goes remote, it goes away. You know, you just don't have it at all. Then, okay. So you have a piece you've modeled, you know, but you have it in and then you can take it out.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, I, I think you could do 20 scenarios, you could do one scenario, but I believe that the three that Dr. Hunter outlined in her memo are the right three and just do the three and see what, you'll learn something from just that exercise because you'll be evaluating what ifs on each of the
Certainly, yeah.
Things. So that's, I
And I think what David, you know, I think we're all sort of thinking in the same lines, but we're, you know, what are the cost drivers in the blended scenario? And if they happen to go away for a month, the cleaning, the transportation costs that may have increased. You know, what are those? You know, Jared will have fun doing those run rates.
But, and yes, I agree with what you're saying. Maybe I should clarify. That wasn't to say that we shouldn't understand the differences between them both. And so so I think you're right, that it makes sense to model them both. I was only saying, we don't want to then as a school committee decide, okay, this is the one that we're going with and limit ourselves from the potential that we might need to switch, swap to the other one. So that, that was my point is that we'll need flexibility, really all year potentially.
Yes.
Well, I think this, this boils down to the fact that we're going to have to build the most robust hybrid that we can, knowing that hybrid this week may not look like hybrid next week, but it's still going to be hybrid, although the, the numbers are going to move.
Yes.
And there's where David's higher cost comes in. How do we build a hybrid that is elastic enough to absorb more kids in a building or more kids online? And what resources? I hate to use the term, but just for understanding here, what resources stay idle? So that we can plug them in again when circumstances allow.
Well, it might not, you know, it might not be idle either. It might be, I applaud Lori's approach to say, you know, we're going to soldier on with our pace of learning, no matter whether you're sitting at your computer in the classroom. But we know kids are kids, right? And parents are going to go back to work and all kinds of things are going to happen that sub optimize that. We, we know when we bring, you know, just for the high school, 1350 kids come in. They're more or less, you know, maybe some would say less rather than more, but they're sort of under our control for, you know, six or seven hours. And, and yet still there's huge variables. Now you take half of them, you put them somewhere else. I think, you know, again, just thinking about it, I think we'll need, we should think about more aides, people who don't teach the curriculum, but maybe are like TAs in the old college style where they answer questions, they could be available for office times for those kids who find themselves lost during the period that they're not in the classroom. So that's not an idle resource. If, if they all show up in the classroom, we'll, we'll give them things to do. And if they, none of them show in the classroom, then the teachers can split the load up. I mean, I, I think, you know, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir, but these kinds of things, what I was about to say is the goal here is to have enough of a resource plan so that whatever happens, we can operate at a high level and not have to go back to the towns midstream with our handout and say, please, we need, or I guess in the district's case, you know, maybe take on more debt. You know, we face that every year with sped because we never know what the population is going to need when we do the budget planning 18 months ahead of time. But this is like, you know, that on steroids, right? So we just need to go through a complete, I, I believe we need to go through just an incredibly robust budgeting exercise so that there is a fair amount of, you know, contingency. And then what I was saying earlier is during that exercise and as it winds through, it's squarely on the shoulders of the school committee to you know, make that case in a convincing way to the towns because you know, make that case in a convincing way to the towns, because it-
I think we lost David for a moment.
Yep.
So I think his word contingency is far better than the one I chose.
We're looking for you to help us out.
David, I think you're coming and going on-
I'm not saying anything.
We missed the tail end of what you said, sort of after contingency.
What court said, you mean, or what I said?
What you said, you, do you-
Oh, I'm sorry.
... was for a bit.
Okay. All I was saying is, I don't remember where that part was, but the, the goal is to get to the end of the line with enough resources, no matter what the situation. And you know, we have to, we, we have to be really well-prepared and what might be a request for certainly not less funding, let's just put it that way.
Right. That's to me why the zero-based has to happen, because we've got to go back all the things that no longer seem critical or can wait, or just the world changed so much that we are gonna see things in a different lens from that budget we built, so.
Okay, so were there any other questions? Back to Lori's actual task force presentation?
Yeah. In my intent, just, we're gonna try this once and see how it goes. I am gonna tonight share the Zoom information, so anyone who wants to listen in can. I'm curious to see how I do, if there's tons of people there, and I'm managing Zoom with the big, the committee of 30-something already, but I wanna try it once, at minimum, where we record it, but I wanna try, I'm gonna try it live tomorrow morning and see how it goes, and all of you can listen in, and anyone else who's interested, and then we'll post the recording. So hopefully that also helps people to feel engaged and included, because they'll hear what the conversation is.
Great. What time is that tomorrow morning?
9:00 AM.
All right, perfect. Okay, um, then did you, you had state and DSC guidance updates on here, is that, that some more information you have for us?
Yeah, the one, and I think we may leave some of these as standing items, just so we check through them every week, but the one that I will offer is Ruth and I both went on the call with Russell Johnston last week on Friday about special education summer services. And it was very clear that they are not ready to tell us that we should be doing live, in-person summer programming, mostly because all the preparation setup and the protocols that I just described are not really outlined and fleshed out for us. So we are going within a remote summer program for special education, and we were ready to do that and had been planning that option already, so we're hitting the ground running, putting invitations out to families and inviting teachers, and all of that should be happening this week fairly fluidly. But that, that's good to have that decision made, so that we know what we're building, and families know what they're offered.
Great. Makes sense.
Okay, so, um, any further questions on that, or should we move on to the budget update?
So I have a good question. Was there any option to offer special education services to do more at-risk students, also the real, when they sort of run it as a pilot, get to know what, you know, how the plan would how the plan that's been put together by the task force will be actually working and practice with a small group of students versus bringing it home plus. I, I find a lot of opportunity to learn from a small expert.
So a little hard to hear, but I think Eva was asking about a smaller group potentially of special education students coming to help us work through the implementation of some of the task force's recommendations. I personally would really like to lock this down and tighten it up and have it ready for the fall and not try to rush and come up with practices prior to then. The closer the summer's gotten, the stronger and stronger I feel about that. Just so that we can be super clear on what's gonna happen and what isn't. I feel like it has to be a package to offer to parents and to staff, so then they can make those choices about what their what their willingness and interest in participating in the live experiences will be. Most of the other countries that have gone back really put it out as an option, and so I hear why you say it. I just feel like it would rush us a little bit, and I wanna be sure we're completely ready and have executed the whole process.
Okay, before we go on to the budget, Lori, could you tell a little bit about retirement incentive?
Yeah, and I think that connects to the budget, and probably by the time we get to the budget, we've talked about all the pieces we were going to tonight. Based between the zero-based discussion, so let me share. This is a no, a memo that we're gonna post. I didn't get it to Erin, so we didn't do that yet, but this memo, oops, sorry, that I just closed. Give me a minute, I'll pull it back up. Three years ago, while I, while I pull it back up, the, three years ago, we offered teachers an option to retire or separate from the district based on their years of service with us. And you've seen the numbers through the budget presentations that a lot of, a fair number did that, and it really was well-received by those who were looking close to going and decided that there was some financial reason to do so, a little maybe earlier than had been planned. So it, just with all these budgetary discussions and the fiscal constraints that we expect, it seemed worth revisiting this for discussion purposes, at least. This is just a quick overview, and it connects to the full proposal from 2017. This is a reminder of the numbers we showed you through Jared's presentation, this fall of the savings, the FTEs of who, how many participated. And you'll remember it was over three years, and the payout was divided over those three years. And so our savings per position, because these are people at the top end of the salary schedule, because of their years of experience and service to us, that we then budget at a master's seven entry rate for the to fill their spot, which deltas us a savings of as much of $30,000 to $40,000 a year. And then that we carry the retirement incentive costs over, over those years, and have really found that it is very beneficial to us fiscally, but also was supportive of teachers who were, who were making, having that consideration. So it seemed seemed like a good time to just remind you that we had done this successfully in the past. I think I didn't expect, I know I didn't expect us to be revisiting it now, because I didn't think we were in this fiscal situation. But given that it was a positive, rather than just a, a loss, a feeling of loss for fiscal challenges, I wanted to put it back out there for you to consider. And Jared's here too, he can answer any questions as well. We run the numbers pretty thoroughly every year, in terms of where we were, where we've been.
So the comp, the incentive was over a period of four years, and, and it in fact gets spread over five, am I correct?
It's, and Jared, I can't see you now, because I'm sharing the screen, but Jared, if you want to speak up, it's a three year-
Three years?
Right.
Depending on when you take it, it's a three year, so your entire FY20, you're getting paid out from '21 to '23, I believe it was $33,000 over three years.
Okay.
He has a pretty, he has a great thing.
So that, that tells me there was a, a window of a couple of years during which someone could, someone could take advantage of the declaration that they're going to accept.
Yes. In 2017, we offered two phases. The first phase was a quicker turnaround, so we proposed it to them in November, and if they wanted to notice us by January, then it pertained to that budget we were building. If they wanted to wait, because it felt too rushed, there was a second deadline of October 1st, I think, informed us for the fiscal year planning after that. So I'm just gonna, Jared's numbers, I'm gonna tweak a little, it was $13,000 a year for a total payout of $40,000 over this three years.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep.
Thank you.
So it all depended on when they, which phase they opted into, as to how the rollout went.
And if we looked at that now, this is obviously, I mean, if we're talking FY21 budget, then that's a very quick turnaround. Are we thinking, would this be for people to make a quick decision and say, okay, I'm retiring a month from now, I'm not coming back next year, or is it a year out?
I would suggest we might consider both. That's kind of, that is where we were three years ago, because in November, we wanted it for that budget cycle. And we gave a month or six weeks notice at most, and then we put another one six months out, so there were windows for people who needed more time. Yeah, I think we might talk about doing it quickly, if, if that's the committee's interest. I don't know what your interest level is, I just wanted to make sure it was out there as an option.
We, we would not be the first district to move on this this year.
No, prob, no.
Just so you know, on my listserv with business managers, there's something going around, and many districts are inquiring about it and asking about it, so.
Okay. So because we did it basically three and two years ago, there has been a year in between when this was not an option. Correct?
And it, it really feels to, to me like there's been two years in between, because they had to opt in sometime between January of 2018 and the fall of 2018.
Right, okay.
So there's been two full budget cycles before we've offered it. We've had impacts since then.
Right.
But it's been two full budget cycles since we've offered it, almost three, as we get to the tail end of this.
Right, exactly. Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify that, because we, we don't want to risk all of a sudden seeming like we're setting a precedent that we do this every year.
Correct.
Clearly we're not, if we move forward with something like this.
Idea about the numbers of people that would be eligible?
We do, I'd have to pull that for you. What we found last time, there was a lot of eligibility up into the dozens of teachers, and the response, partly because there's, once people come here and are here for their whole career, so they might hit the top step 15 years into the district and be a long way from thinking of retiring, because it's, it's their, their, you know, teaching job for the, most of their career. So the, it was at least in the dozens, we'll get the numbers for you. But what we found was the response rate was really moderate and manageable. That was a concern we had the first time, was are we gonna get this massive exodus? And really struggle with that, and that isn't what happened. We can, I, I feel, feel like I remember we put out a little feeler survey before we did it, just to get a feel for what the number of people who might be interested would be, so we could measure impact if we did offer it. You know, a little, little gentle survey of, would you think this if we were to offer it, before we put out the formal invitation?
And just my two cents, the little bit I've seen, and maybe Jared can give me more information, but with our tight budgets, $40,000, even though it doesn't sound like a big number, it seems like other districts are using a lower number now.
That may be.
Yeah, I haven't seen the numbers yet.
Yeah.
I saw Greenwich, Connecticut was 15.
So is this, the, um, so if a teacher was not thinking of, if a teacher retires at the end of her time, whatever it is, just plain retires, that's it, right? But if they say to you, if they take you up on an offer that says, what, I will leave three years before I was opposed to, or what, what is actually the deal that you're offering?
We, we strictly, strictly based it on their number of years in the district, mostly because that, for our perspective, that was the best financial gain, was looking for people at the top step. So to us, whether they retired or just separated and went off to another position, or something totally different, at the committee at the time, that was a really not a huge factor to us. I'd have to double-check, but I, there weren't many people who separated and didn't retire. They, most of them were at their retirement.
They were able, they were eligible for their retirement anyway, basically, is what you're saying.
Most of them, there were certainly some who were eligible that weren't eligible for, they were eligible for our program, but not retirement. But people who engaged in this program, very few, if any, of them were of that category.
And was it, I see these dollar figures, and I heard the $40,000 and the $15,000. Was it a flat dollar figure or some percent of salary? What was the?
It was a flat $40,000. And the way we came up with that, which is certainly up for discussion, was really looking for the delta of where the savings would be beneficial to the district, and the delta between the top step and the mid, the master's seven that I described is, is $40,000.
In other words, if, if I retired, if I take you up and I'm top of scale, and we replace me with some younger person like Eva, who was making 40K less, it's sort of a wash in the first couple of years. She's at a lower, it's, is it a long-term savings, or there's actually in-the-year savings?
No, but, well, there's the long-term savings for sure. We, it's really helping to reset the entire teacher lines, because whatever savings we get there stays low, because the people coming in only gradually make their way back up towards those numbers. So we definitely, these numbers that are on the screen are some of what we've seen over time. It's, I, you know, it's definitely been beneficial.
And, and, and the FTE column are the number of people who actually took the deal in '17?
Yes, there's one more column, not, this is from this year, so one's already rolled off, but it was eight and a half, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yes, this is the total amount, so at the regional level, six people total, and some of them are part-time, so it's more people than FTEs. And at the CPS level, it was the 17 and a half that you see there.
And you believe now there'd be more people eligible and also more people who might be interested?
Um, I, I had really quick feeler conversations with the union leadership on Friday to see if they were interested in me bringing this back up, and their answer was sure. So I, I, I wonder if there wouldn't be. Especially in this environment, I guess, question, if I was a year from retirement and you offered me this, I would go. I'm not, so don't worry about that, but.
You're not offering, sorry.
You know, I, I feel like in this environment, it might, might help offset somebody's stress if they're trying to hang out, hang on for another year or something. So it, it seemed worth asking.
Yeah, okay. And you have, we had this conversation this morning at parallel school. You have a June 15th deadline or something like that, where you have to notify teachers if you're retaining them or not retaining them for the next fiscal, next school year?
So I can, I'll clarify that. Both contracts that we operate off of have reduction-in-force deadline of June 15th, with language that says, under unusual, extraordinary circumstances, we, it's understandable that we would not make June 15th, and we could make those decisions into the summer. So we are, I believe, all in agreement, I talked with the union presidents about that last week as well. We all seem to think this has hit the threshold of unusual and extraordinary circumstances. And rather than have to pink slip people we don't really know would even be in jeopardy, I think we're all in agreement to wait it out until we have budget numbers to see if that even pertains.
I think the likelihood of people taking it is a bit of a double-edged sword, because a number of people would take this and then go on to another, either another career or go teach somewhere else, out of state. And that certainly isn't gonna look very appealing for the next couple of years. The people, people who are gonna retire at the end of this year have already committed to that, have they not?
They, they have. They, they have. I'm going to qualify that. One person's changed their mind. What I would suggest we consider, two of the people who are retiring would be eligible for this. I would suggest if we were to do this, we would engage with them and, and consider inviting them. But not all of them who are retiring are eligible. So.
That was my point. Thank you. Any other questions on this?
Do we have to make a decision?
Laurie, what's the timing? Great.
Um, you know, the sooner the better, but I don't want you to make a decision tonight. It's the first time you've seen this and processed. So I would say if we're going to meet next week, which I think is what we're planning, we should bring it back then for more conversation. If you have questions on data points you want, but you mentioned certainly at least how many people are eligible, any other questions like that, let us know and we'll gather that over the next week and bring it back to you.
So with, you know, get a little more information on maybe actual people that haven't reached out yet. If the program was available?
Just say that one more time.
So can we get either from the unions or whatever, just a sort of a, yeah, you know, there are five more people, 10 more people, or no, I, yeah, maybe not. I mean, you've got everybody you know of already. So that kind of thing.
Yes, I think we could approach them and ask them to help with that.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Can we also get, sorry, can we also get some numbers of what other districts are paying out? Someone mentioned Greenwich, Connecticut, which is wealthy, very, very wealthy district that is offering $50,000 for teachers to retire. Can we get some more numbers? We are in a different situation. We are not in normal times. So to Laurie's point, you know, there will be people that will be happy to go, whether you give them an incentive or not.
So Eva, I'm not sure we picked up all of that.
I think the question was, can you get us some more data on what other districts are offering as incentives? Some might be offering $15,000, some might be offering 20, 40.
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Cynthia referenced Greenwich, Connecticut. I know that they have an interesting proposal for a $30,000 your early retirement incentive. And what's, I thought was unusual about it, which has people scratching their heads, a few of us, is the school committee will rescind the offer if a sufficient number don't, don't elect to take it. So they've got a particular target they're trying to meet, or they pull the whole darn thing back, which
That's interesting.
struck me as very unusual. Maybe there's a logic to it that's escaping me.
Huh.
But anyway, to Eva's point, we can, I'm sure Jared is going to do that homework.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for us to have, if we're going to have to make some decisions on this, to have some numbers. And I think the logic that we used of the delta between the people who are going to retire and a level that we would try to rehire at is, is a good one. I don't know that, you know, it's as good as, it's as good as any number. I mean, we don't know, we're not trying to hit a target. And, you know, it's a benefit to us year one, the way it's structured. So the, you know, teachers who take it is, it's, it's going to help us no matter what financially. So, you know, without, without some real rationale for a lower number other than just to what other people are doing. And I, I sort of tend toward.
The rationale is that 22, 23 budgets could be very tight.
Yeah.
So, right. Though we're saving, you know, if we have, that's why I need to know a number. So if we're paying 20 teachers, whatever that split is every year, that could add up and be a teacher.
Right, but you wouldn't, I mean, if I'm understanding it correctly, you never price the delta between the top of step teacher and the expected replacement.
We're breaking up a little there, David.
It's never higher than that, right?
Yeah. And, and I think if you looked at those, if you broke those numbers down, you'd probably be better off having M7 or at that point, M8s or M9s on the payroll than a, than a max teacher. Because if you're carrying a max teacher and you've got to make up X number of dollars, that, that translates to more people you have to let go. Because remember, we have to let go from the bottom up.
Yep.
If you have replaced a top step teacher with somebody mid-range, yeah, you got a $15,000 hit for the number. But remember, you're saving somewhere in the vicinity of 40 that year. That would, so you, you know, ultimately over two or three people, you end up picking up another person if you're in a, if you're in a cutting staff. It's kind of a wide way to look at it, but I think if we were in that midst, that's probably what it would look like to us. I don't know if that's something charity following what I'm saying.
And, and, and just to give you a quick visual, if you take those FTE numbers and times the FTE by 40,000, that's what we're assuming. And we're still projecting all of those savings. So I'm looking right now just at the Concord, I mean, at the high school, you know, three people took it. And, well, six, six total. And each year we were getting 71,000 with the replacements. Went down a little bit. But you, you, you're going to, you're going to get a savings each year and it's going to be long-term. So if we stick with the 75, every teacher that is going to be eligible for this is already at the top step. So even a master's is still getting 110. Their doctorate, they're 122, 123. So you're automatically going to get between the 30 and 40. Sorry, David.
And if we end up having to, you know, the budget ends up showing us that we have to cut some people this year, that would be, we actually, I think we'd cut fewer people to pick up dollars if, and people took this.
So it, it doesn't sound like there's any reason not to do it, other than you are losing your most experienced teachers, right?
Mm-hmm. So that was one of the big concerns three years ago, was that we didn't want a mass exodus of our, you know, strong veteran teachers. What we learned is a little at a time, which is the way it played out, was manageable and we could hire at a level of some experience to replace them. So I, I think to Cynthia's question, the, the putting the feeler out to get a sense of how many people would be interested would be some important piece of information.
I guess as we would have quite a stream of positions.
Well, and whether I like this or not, other districts are being hit pretty catastrophically. So they're going to be riffing teachers and the pool is going to be fairly flush this spring and summer. So.
Okay. So you'll send us something before?
Yes.
Just. Anything else on this?
Can we put it on the agenda? As a item?
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have a couple of action items. I want to make sure we give ourselves enough time to get back to executive session and then let these guys get over to the board meeting in Carlyle. Can we move on to the, the action items? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody want to do that first one out? Have a lively chat, I can get it.
I would be happy to if you want, Wally.
Thanks, Court.
This is a COVID-19 food service donations acceptance. I'll read the text and the motion. The Concord and Carlyle communities have generously donated a total of $39,595 to support the CCHS Food Services Program as we continue to provide meal services to families in need. A total of 278 donations have been received to date. The average donation amount is $142. The motion, I move that the Concord, Carlyle School Committee vote to accept donations of $39,595 from 278 individuals and charitable entities in the Concord and Carlyle communities.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second? It's just for the region, is that correct?
As the fiscal agent, but really handling Concord, Carlyle, Boston. As I understand it.
It's going through the region.
Yeah, so it should just be a region vote. Can we have a second for the region?
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
With sincere, with sincere thanks. There's, there's a lot of heart in Concord and Carlyle. So thank you.
So Rainey?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Booth?
Aye.
Modell?
Aye.
Mustafi?
Aye.
Johnston, aye. And the next one?
Be happy to have a go at it. And perhaps Jared can fill us in on anything else here. The Concord Public, Concord Public Schools has received a donation of $500 from Alliance Energy LLC. The motion is as follows. I move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a donation of $500 from Alliance Energy LLC.
I can, go ahead. Jared, do you want me to grab that or do you want to do it?
Right, yep.
So this is, you'll remember months ago, there was a check of $500 from the local Exxon station. This is a second check from a different station donated directly to the schools. So it's part of their school charitable program. We've had it for a little while and haven't accepted it because of all the changes since March. So we wanted to be able to process this and make sure that it was accounted for.
And Laurie, is it for something specific or just as needed?
Just as needed.
Might I ask where Alliance Energy is, is located? Do we know?
I don't know. It's part of the Exxon umbrella because that's what this is related to.
Okay. Thank you.
I think. So is this just, is this for both or?
This is Concord Public Schools.
Just CPS. Okay. So any further, any further comments from anyone?
I think it's wise to accept, express our thanks and note to the community that this is in support of education, no more, no less, and thereby shouldn't be interpreted as anything more or less.
Okay. Then I'll take a roll call. Booth?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Johnston?
Johnston.
And about aye. So it passes. With thanks.
Okay, so take a motion with Jared?
Well, no, we have an executive session.
All right.
So we would, here, let me do it. I have it here.
Yeah, I ran off with my.
You got the doggy homework again?
You heard her.
We would take a motion for the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlyle Regional School Committee to enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-personnel, and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigating position of the public body and not to return to open session. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
So that's for the region. Can someone move it for Concord, please?
Move for Concord.
Okay. And we need a second for each?
Second for both.
Good.
Cynthia, be.
Okay, Cynthia seconded for the region.
That's okay.
Oh, oh, who, okay. Who moved it for Concord then?
Court.
Oh, Court did. Okay, got it.
I think.
No, I did.
Oh, Wally.
Wally did. We'll see if Aaron can follow all this.
You'll have to watch the tape.
Poor Aaron. What do we put her through? Okay, then we'll, we'll take a roll call vote. Rainey? Is that for both? Yes, okay. Booth?
Booth, aye for both.
Johnston?
Aye for both.
Modell?
Aye for region.
Mustafi?
Aye for region.
And about aye for both. Thank you all. Thanks to all who've joined us. And we'll
The next one.
Be an executive session.